I think it works just to where the wiring. Okay.
Council of Casino. Mayor. Council. 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 Mayor, you have a form.
We have our audience of citizens next up. If anyone in the audience either here or on our Zoom call, Zoom meeting, that would be time to adjust the council on anything on our agenda or any is bothering you or or you want to compliment us by the town. Here in anyone wanting to speak, so we'll go ahead and close our audience of citizens and move on to the mayor's update. I know the affordable housing, I haven't seen how they get about affordable housing in the planning conservation, right, planning conservation, they met the other Wednesday. I couldn't make that meeting, but that the other one, the other meeting was the the Board of Ed meeting. That was, I thought that was, you know, a better better meeting than we've had a couple of times there at the Board of Ed, so I congratulations to the board that they did a nice job at that meeting and a lot of public input. But it went well, they, you know, ended the mask mandate. And the only part of it that was interesting was some people that stood up regarding social and and Social Justice and Equity Committee, they were upset that it had been disbanded, but what I gathered at the meeting from to Julia, the president was that they're going to revisit it, it just wasn't done in the right format and there were some issues with it as far as public notice and different things, I think when it got formed by a former, former, former board presence and not the current board, so I thought it was encouraging that they were going to reach out to, you know, other people in the community to get that committee, I think, up and running again is what I gathered from it, but so that's, that was, I thought, very positive and the rest of the meeting, I thought, went pretty well. And then there was our meeting on the Community Senior Center, which Brendan, if you got a couple of minutes to update.
A special meeting for discussion and introduction. Britain, we're on, there to Y M C A. Showing some interest about coming into Berlin, we heard about what they do, what they can offer. And then coming up, we're going to start putting all the information we gathered, start discussing what you want to put in the report to get to the town council, so we're going to start that this weekend, I would assume that we may have some other special meetings so that we can get that to you. That's, that's our goal, we're trying to as we can, so we'll know if we'll do any more visits. We've seen enough places and we have an idea of where we want to go. But the process, so we don't, I don't, I can't tell you what kind of recommendations will be coming forward, but it's just a lot of the information we gather.
All right, I appreciate all the hard work, Mike, anything to add to that? Looking forward to everybody's ideas. Good, well, I appreciate all the, the work all of the committee members have put in and I know it's a, you know, again, it's a tough job, but guys have been through it and you've done a lot of visits and certainly taken in a lot of information, so we look forward to the report. Get moving in whatever direction everybody decides to go in, so we'll look forward for that. That's all I have on the update. And we'll head to our, move on to our meeting agenda, consent agenda, we have nine items on our consent agenda. Number one is accept donations to the, I just went through them quickly. Donations to Berlin Animal Control for $20, Pet Food价50. Except monetary donations totaling $3,352 to the Berlin Memorial Library. Posited into some different funds and used for different things there, accepted donation $95 in the funds that supplies expenditure account is important. Prove Alex Jocelyn and J and S Soccer Camps to charge registration fee of $50 for the J and S Soccer Camp, which will take place on April 11 through the 15th. At Sage. Approve Berlin High School to be able to sell food beverages and charge entrance fee of $175 per team for the lineman challenge competition Saturday, July 9th, Sage Park. Prove waiving estimated fuel usage fees, not to exceed the amount of $9,070 for the 2022 Nutmeg State Games, the Newell's Field at Sage, July 14th through 31st. Prove around Little League, available to sell food beverages, ice cream, candy and merchandise. For the 2022 baseball season, the following locations, Pettit, Garrity, Placini, Danahia, Centurale Field. Number eight, approve acceptance of the donations to the fishing derbies in the amount of $1,550 for the Berlin Park and Rec Department. The fishing derbies to be held on Saturday, August 23rd and Saturday, August 30th at Sage. And number nine, approve John Demco and Maxi Lorenzo. Of P and Q Enterprises to charge a registration fee of $175 for the Central Connecticut Youth Football Camp taking place June 15, 16, 17, 2022. Or possibly June 20 through the 24th, again, at Scholies Field, so those are our nine items for our consent agenda, any comments or questions from the council? There are none, want to take a motion? Mr. Mayor, with the motion to accept the consent agenda items, thank you. There are no other comments or questions, all those in favor? Pose, all right, motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, the first item on the agenda is an annual update from Central Connecticut Health District, Charles Brown.
Hi, glad to be here, thank you very much for allowing us to be part of this, I'm just gonna share my presentation to the screen. And I'll get going. So this is our first time doing an annual update in a couple of years because of COVID. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, we used to do this each year, just to remind folks of the things that we do and then what a public health department actually accomplishes for, you know, what we get funded for. You know, in the past two years, we've been out in the front and in front of the councils quite a bit. So I think the people understand more about public health now than they really ever have. So, you know, but, you know, in the frenzy of COVID, people may have forgotten some of the things that, that we do every day, regardless of the pandemic, so we'll be running through some of that. This presentation's on behalf of me and Dr. Pat Checo, who unfortunately could not make it tonight. We also have board members Lisa Payanessa and Ray Gerima, I'm not sure if Ray is there in person or not. But they're, they are your board members from, from Berlin and they do a great job keeping everything straight. Just some general information about the district, we are the local health department for the towns of Berlin, Newington, Rocky Hill and Weathersfield, we serve a population of about 97,000, founded in 1996, we've had 25 plus years, just whenever, our 25th year providing the broad range of public health services to all of our member towns. We're one of 20 regional public health departments in the state that you can see the, the blue is, is regional health districts. The yellow are municipal departments and then they have some white, which are part-time health departments within the state of Connecticut. General information about us, we still have our new office here in Rocky Hill, 2080 Celestine Highway, Suite 100. We're up to 14 full-time employees at this point, we've added about three COVID-19 through grant-funded positions. We have over 50 active volunteers and lay volunteers that have assisted us in things like vaccinations and contact tracing. We do have an oversight from a 14-member Board of Health that's made up by board members appointed by the member towns and that's based on population. Berlin, as you can see, gets three board members, Newington at four, and then Rocky on Weathersfield with three. Jumping into some of the bottom line stuff, our revenues generally come in, in, in about three ways. One is the town contributions, which currently for the 2020, 2021 year was about $6.60 per capita, that's per person. In addition to that, we do have some program revenue that we get for licenses, fees for programs that we actually put on. We actually get money for doing vaccinations, which we actually put back into, into the agency. And then grants from the federal state or others, and then a little bit of interest income. Our expenditures, really, we don't make things, we don't do widgets, our expenditures are mostly around keeping our very professional staff available to continue to do the work, so salaries and benefits take up the lion's share of our expenses. With some contracting stuff and our overall operating expenses for the offices rounding out most of the others, but by and large, what we do is provide professional services and have the professional staff to do so. So a little bit of change of kind of a contrast between healthcare and public health, they're kind of similar but different, and when people hear health, they tend to think healthcare. And healthcare, their primary focus is really on the individual, where in public health, we really look on the population as a whole, as, as who we take care of. In healthcare, the interventions that they use, they diagnose somebody and then they treat them for that particular ailment. In public health, we use similar things where we have to do assessments, we develop policies, and then we assure that those policies are followed as, as an intervention against something that's going wrong within the community. The process for healthcare really looks at the management of patient care. Where in public health, we look at things like system management, like what's the environment that we're living in and what type of human behavior affects the particular issue that we're dealing with. The outcome in healthcare, we're returning that individual to health. Where in public health, we really try to strive for a healthy community as a whole and to continue to make them healthier through prevention and outreach. So the purpose of the public health agency, we're going to go through a lot of actions that we have here listed to show you kind of how we do things to, to be able to make the communities healthier, I wish it was as easy as going to the pharmacy and getting an ounce of prevention, but it's really not, unfortunately. So some COVID data for, for Berlin, let's, you know, kind of tackle the animal, the elephant in the room. As of the 23rd of February, the total number of cases for Berlin was 3,417, unfortunately, the number of deaths was at 47. And the people that we've had tested at that point was 15,754. Vaccinations, Berlin's been doing really good with respect to the elderly, had 100% of their, of their elderly vaccinated very early in the game, which was crucial to protecting that vulnerable population. In some of the younger categories, the vaccination rate has been, has been kind of low. And we've been trying to talk to schools and as far as how we can get, get boost those rates and protect, you know, the younger kids that can't be vaccinated at this point. Overall, I think that all four of our communities are doing very well, but mostly in the 80s and, and 80 percentile as far as has been by age group. And I think that they, you know, will continue to work on this as we move forward. Some of the things that we did during COVID-19, once again, vaccination of vulnerable populations was one of the main things that we, we jumped on. Working with, you know, to target those adults with functional needs in the homebound, could not have done this without our partners and social services in the senior center. You know, Team Doyle did a great job of helping us to identify those people and get them to the vaccinations that they needed. Daily reporting of cases to each of our member towns, we have volunteers from each of our communities that assist us with contact tracing when we actually do get a positive case. Doing a lot of health education around, you know, how people can prevent this, what they need to do for quarantine and isolation, once they do test positive, worked with the, with the schools for technical support all the way to this past week, when most, when all four of our towns went mask optional. We've been subject matters for experts, for the press, for regulated facilities, for residents, our phones really had run off the hook for about two years now, in being able to support questions and to try to find the answers as we've been going on. Working regionally to support other local health departments in the region and worked to distribute that personal protective equipment to medical providers and long-term care facilities so that they could protect both their staff and the residents thereof. All right, so other than COVID-19, there is other things that we actually do to help prevent the epidemics and spread of disease. For influenza, we did, you know, drive-through vaccination clinics this year, and we'd done over 1,300 flu shots and the average time from them getting to the beginning of the process through it was about three minutes. In addition to that, we have every day where we get reports of other diseases like hepatitis A, B and C, salmonella, lead poisoning, Legionella that we have to follow up on, and we work to be able to assure that people have the information they need to be able to deal with that. Other things, you know, we're coming into the springtime and do you remember a few years ago when triple E was the big issue that we had to deal with? If we had only known that that was going to be, that was not going to be the thing that would control our lives for two years, but there are still mosquitoes out there, vector-borne diseases like Eastern equine encephalitis, West Nile virus, that we do monitor along with Lyme disease and follow up on. These are things that as we're coming into the springtime, as people are doing spring cleaning, making sure that the breeding areas, you know, water catchment, those types of things can get taken care of so that we don't have issues with mosquito-borne diseases as we move into the spring and summertime. CCHG has also responded to the opioid crisis and continues to do so, we've been the convener for local response agencies in our four towns. We currently have work groups that address prevention, response and recovery, we've been awarded a two additional years on a grant from the Department of Health and Addiction Services to work with people suffering from addiction and their families. And what we've seen in the past couple of years is that where we're seeing the overdoses and where we're seeing a lot of things that spread out from the Berlin Turnpike and the Celestine Highway, where traditionally you see these overdoses occurring and they're spreading out into the residential areas, so we're working, having a recovery coach trying to follow up, work with police, especially in Newington at this point, to identify those people and get them to the recovery resources that they need. Every day, we protect against environmental hazards and our environmental staff is out there working non-stop. Last year, they did 1,242 food service inspections, 15 septic, 85 pools, 46 motels, 125 salon inspections to assure that those places would be safe and, and able to be used by our public. They also responded to 235 complaints over the year last year, 43 of those being COVID-19 related, but the majority of those end up being housing property maintenance issues. You know, other things that we look at are food-related, rodents, garbage, you know, air and water pollution, and we do respond to complaints within the motels. Additionally, with environmental health hazards, we have our Putting on Airs asthma programs that does home visits with asthma patients, even through the pandemic where we couldn't actually go out and do inspections, we had people that were doing inspections with iPhones, going through cameras, doing the virtual visits to be able to address a children's uncontrolled asthma, all in the midst of the pandemic, so those programs didn't stop. They just adapted to what technology they needed to do so that they could continue to have an impact within our communities. We also do radon kit distribution usually in January and coming up there in the summertime, we'll probably have more of those and follow up on lead poisoning and do prevention in, in that respect. Healthy behaviors is one of the things that we have been key on for ever since I've gotten here before. Our walking competition among the four member towns, I am unfortunately have to pass the news that Berlin this past year did not win, the, the first year that you guys did not win the walking competition. So Newington won overall competition for 2021. Weathersfield won the Impact Award for the highest participation, so you guys got to get back up there when the weather's getting warmer and get yourselves ready so that you can, you can make a big comeback, we're expecting big things. Responding to disasters and assisting the communities in recovery, we continue to do emergency preparedness planning, even in the midst of the pandemic, using the lessons that we've learned to be able to make our plans better and work, work a little bit more efficiently. We use our flu clinics as drills for medical countermeasures. And we actually, last year, we did everything drive-through and that was the first years that we've actually ever done a drive-through clinic and we proved that we could actually accomplish that in the midst of a, you know, of an infectious disease to be able to continue to protect our citizens, so we, we continue to look at plans and make our plans better as we're working forward, also looking at flooding and any other natural disasters. In addition to the infectious diseases. As we prepare for, for the future, we've also adapted our administrative and health policies, I'm proud to announce that our sanitary code has been adopted. You know, here last year, we did online connections with our regulated community to get feedback and we actually made a few changes with respect to our sanitary code that oversees our regulated facilities. We're continuing to the, to adopt the FDA food code as the state adopts it, so our, our folks are 100% trained on the FDA code and ready to take that up when the state does so. We're beginning to, or actually, we've begun our community health assessment and improvement planning process by having a lot of data collected, base, baseline data for things like infectious diseases, for demographics for our communities, so that we can bring together a group and, and actually analyze where our gaps are and where we need to focus our, our resources in the future, and we look forward to having you as partners as we do that, it's your communities. We want and need your input to be able to assure where we're going in the future meets what your needs are. With that, I offer our thanks to all of our member towns and to you, our public, for your continued support and I stand ready to answer any questions.
Thanks, Charles, appreciate it. I know you've had probably difficult couple of years, we all have, I appreciate all, all the work on behalf of Berlin and the other member town, so thank you very much for that.
Our, our pleasure.
Questions, council, question? We have any questions, Charles? Again, thank you for, for the report and keep up the, keep up the good work.
All right, well, thank you very much, and if you have any questions offline, feel free to contact us at our offices and I hope that y'all have a good day, a good and a great meeting.
We will, tonight on number two.
Good evening, all. You may recall that last year, the town council referred the police department's locker room renovation project building commission, one here on behalf of, and the intent of that referral was to determine the cost and feasibility of expanding and renovating the police locker room facilities. So after meeting with the PD and the police commission and reviewing the information, PVC retained Jakuski Humans Architects to take a look at the overall master plan as well as how the locker rooms can be phased into that renovation, so Brian Humes is here to present the findings of his work and explain the process. I'm going to hand out, he has, he's going to be presenting on the screens, but also he has some handouts, I'll hand those out and let him take over. Good evening to the mayor, members of the council.
We're good.
Everybody have their copies? Good evening.
Excuse me.
Architects, right here in Berlin, Connecticut. And we were retained last fall to review the plans and space needs assessment that we had prepared prior for the Berlin Police Department for our potential renovations to the lower level at Town Hall. And we were asked now to expand that scope into an area that would be made available, which is currently the Board of Ed storage. So just as a shameless plug, since we have an ability to do a shameless plug, Jakuski Humans Architects right here in Berlin. I thought I'd show you on the slide, the amount of public safety work that we have in our office in the last 25 years. Jakuski Humans Architects has led the state in public safety experience. And we have more current public safety work within the office than any other architectural firm right now in Connecticut, so I just thought we'd inform the council of that, make you aware that a lot of this public safety work throughout the state is being done right up, right up in our Berlin office. So what we bring to the project is not just our experience with the Berlin Police Department, but you can bring experience throughout New England as we've done these projects. For the existing lower level, what we're showing in this slide is what we're starting from. We documented the spaces that the Berlin Police Department are currently occupying on the lower level. And it's just over 10,000 square feet of space. What you want to see on the slide is just the coloring of the departments and what we have pointed out the police department and what they were fully aware of is the way that they're using the available space right now is not in the most efficient manner. The way they're using the space is a lot of, a lot of it is how they've been forced into using the space over time, but the amount of time they've been occupied, the space hasn't really conformed to their needs, they've had to conform the space to their needs. So what you see in areas such as green spaces in the plan, the green spaces are all over the plan, they're not really concentrated in one area. Areas of blue or areas of troll, they're kind of scattered throughout the plan. But it's the best use that they have been able to implement for their current space. On the next slide, you see the colors have now come to be adjacent, so we've improved the efficiency of the space. We've also looked to expand the space into areas of the Berlin Board of Ed storage. It increases the amount of available space for the police department by about 4,000 square feet, rough numbers. But they're getting about 4,000 square feet of additional space. So a challenge to us was, how do we best utilize that 4,000 square feet of space? And then what does the rest of the department become if areas were vacated and moved into the areas of at 4,000 square feet, how, how could the rest of the department benefit from expanding into space that they don't currently occupy? The way that we were able to develop what's needed from the department was we took the space needs assessment that we had currently completed for the department, starting in 2008. Revised in 2011, revised again in 2013, but now we revised it again in September of 2021. Knowing at that time that they only had available gross square footage. Knowing at that time that they only had available gross square footage of fifteen thousand three hundred forty square feet. How could they best utilize that? And how could they identify the needs of that fifteen thousand square feet? But working with the police department. We went through the needs. And they assisted me on what would be a priority. For the space if it did become available. Space needs assessment was was reviewed by the police commission. It was approved and endorsed by the police commission before we proceeded to put any plans together. So we had an endorsement from the police department and we also had endorsement from the police commission. And then we also presented it to the Public Building Commission and had an endorsement from them. And to proceed to a schematic design level of development and now implementing the needs into the plans. That's what then generated and I go for. The plan that you saw that I just presented and how we were proposing to implement those needs into the. The lower level. In addition to interior space and interior renovations. Within the space needs assessment, there was also a desire from the police department to. Furnish and provide carport structures for the cruisers, fleet vehicles within the parking area. Of the police department. We have thirteen spaces that are being proposed for covered carport structures. That would be the primary site improvement that you see in addition to the renovations that were being planned on the interior. All of the interior renovation is you ain't using current space with one small exception. When I presented the plan to the Public Building Commission. I told them that the plan satisfies all state statutes, all requirements for accreditation. What it did not support is a complete ADA accessible facility. Because the public does not have access to handicapped accessible restrooms for the public's use. If you've been to the police department, the lower level, they do have a public bathroom right off the best, the public lobby. But that public bathroom is not handicapped or ADA accessible. So we were tasked to make the bathroom for public use ADA accessible. It's the only area that we're showing of expansion of a current. And what we've done is we've made the bathrooms for the public handicapped accessible. We've also made the bathroom for the dispatchers handicapped accessible. Because they also have the need for an adjacent restroom and they also have the need. Requirement for ADA accessibility for that function. So that's the only place that we're expanding the foot, that small area of a two bathroom block, the public lobby. Everything else is within the current. Talked about taking space out of the board of it, storage. The only other area that we're considering for potential use by the police department is some area of town storage. At the bottom of the plan. Which is currently being utilized right now for. A food pantry area. And there is also a little support area for file storage. Not showing any impact to the file storage area, but we are showing an impact where the. Food pantry area is on the lower level of the plan. For some expanded storage areas for the police department. So that was, that was the only other area that we utilized in addition to the order bed space, which was identified previously. But this was all reviewed. We took the plans back. Both to the police department and to the police commission and to the public building commission. We all had a chance to review and comment. For a second time now, as to whether the plan satisfied the space needs assessment. And we had overwhelming support and endorsement from all three of the entities that we reviewed this with. The police department, the police commission and the public building commission. What we were then asked to do was look at the project on a potentially phased approach. We phased this project out over. Time. But also we need to phase the project to make sure the police department was could remain operational twenty four seven. Within the renovation. Contractors can't just win and take the whole space and assume that the police department can remain operational. So yes, phasing makes sense because phasing would have to happen. Just for the police department to continue to occupy and provide services. So the plan that you see that we handed out and see on the screen now is colored by phase. And it's divided into a three-phase scenario. The area in red would be the area of the fire firearm training range. And the board of its face, that red area would be phase one. The police department would continue to operate as they do in the space that they currently occupy. They would have to vacate all of the area of former firearms training range. If you vacate that area, contractors can take it over. Construction access would be. Through the board of ed storage from the rear of the building. So contractors would not even be at the front of the building. Would not even be impacted by the public entrance. We also put into phase one that bathroom room expansion off the lobby. Because if it's new construction, we wanted to get to that early. It's really could be done independent. But we we did include that in phase one. We anticipated that phase one would be about a six month duration to complete that renovation. The area in blue would be areas of phase two. And those would be major renovation areas within the existing building. Assuming at that point, all of the areas in red would have been occupied. So locker rooms would, existing locker rooms would be vacated. The PD would have use of new locker rooms. So then in phase two, a contractor could go back into those vacated locker rooms and renovate those for another purpose. Areas of. Evidence could be renovated because we're providing new evidence areas and evidence storage in the areas of phase one. And areas of prisoner processing and detention could then be renovated. But renovating areas of prisoner process, processing and detention would require the police department to utilize the neighboring community. For support during those times of renovation. It's a common practice for police departments when they're renovating, look to seek out assistance from neighboring communities for purposes of. Prisoner processing and detention. That is estimated to be another four months for phase two. Phase three is only a two month duration and it's coming back and renovating areas of purple. Small area at the executive, administrative executive. And also creating a new training classroom in the area which is currently the detective bureau. The detective bureau would have been moved and vacated out into areas of blue during phase two. So that would make that space in purple available and unoccupied. For purposes of creating a new training classroom. We added an area in green. An area in green is not a fourth phase, but it's. Items you could do within any phase. If you wanted to create a phase for it, you could. But those areas, those areas of green could be done at any time. It would be the carports. It would be the area that we talked about where town storage. Converting that to storage areas used by police department. So you could insert those into any page. You could defer those. You could, you could put it at the end of the project. We did send the drawings out to a professional cost estimator. We do not do cost estimating in-house. We feel that's not a prudent way to get you an accurate number. So we did send this out to a professional cost estimator out of Massachusetts. They've done cost estimating for us for twenty plus years for police facilities. And they've been very good at what they've been doing. I do have to put an asterisk about. Very good because this current economy is very bad for trying to estimate construction costs. Any cost estimator will tell you right now there's a contingency that needs to be placed onto cost estimates. This does have a ten percent estimated contingency. And a three and a half percent escalation factor built into these numbers. So they've tried to be a little conservative on what their cost estimate is. What this cost estimate is doing is only anticipating what the hard costs are for construction and site work. But they have broken it down into airports and site work, main building renovations, and then a total. The main building renovation. Is two hundred and thirty five dollars and twenty nine cents a square foot. If you're comparing that to new construction in the industry right now, this is less than that. So it's favorable in terms of dollars per square foot. Compared to new construction projects that we're doing in the state right now for police facilities. So what I've handed out to you. Is a total project cost worksheet that takes the anticipated hard costs, which were provided by the cost estimator. You got it soft costs, which are other project related expenses. And then we've also added another project contingency for unknowns. This is a renovation. We don't know exactly every bit of construction that we may encounter. So we have added a fifteen percent project contingency on the overall project. Because again, this is only schematic design that you've asked us to do. There's not detailed design in this number. You've only brought it to a schematic level. We've broken out. The costs according to. The three-phase project that we just described, also identified. Cost to bring the project from design to bidding. And we've also given you a cost for that fourth or any phase. Cost that could be supplemented into any of these phases. Now I thought I'd just quickly show you what we've done in other departments of similar. Topics that we've talked about tonight. This is not the Berlin Police Department. But this is a recently completed renovation of a police department. You can see the lockers that we're providing. These are the same types of lockers, same same types of finishes that would be. Proposed for a new locker room for Berlin. This is one that we just completed in Massachusetts. These lockers are very sophisticated. They have power in the lockers. They have ventilation within the lockers. They're designed for this purpose. They have a storage drawer below. Below the bench for additional support and additional storage below the locker. We've proposed booking rooms within your prisoner processing area. Your prisoner processing area, in my opinion. Remains a liability. We've renovated the cells, reduced your liability for detention. But prisoner processing is also another area that could be high liability for the town. And what we've utilized in other departments of these booking rooms. In your plan, we have two booking rooms being proposed for your lower level. In my opinion, officer safety for me is not negotiable. We were doing a design for a police facility. We have to provide officer safety in prisoner processing areas. Officer safety is really critical. And the current processing area that you have downstairs is original to the building. It has liabilities and we can address those. We have according to the plan and the cost estimate that we put together. This is another department where we utilize the same concept of booking rooms instead of a large bullpen. Instead of going in and out of rooms for officers. The officer puts the container into a booking room, then the officer is free to roam the area and then has a safer environment within the processing area. Physical fitness, something that's part of the plan in addition to locker rooms. Departments want to maintain a physical condition for their for their officers. But we do see these. Physical fitness rooms on going into facilities. They are being used. Typically, they utilize these fitness areas before shift or after shift. They're not being utilized during shift. But they become popular and what happens in these departments is the officers would show up early or they stay late. They're in the building. Longer periods of time, whether they're on duty or not on duty. It's, it does boost morale. It does help the department. It does have people come in. One department, this department particularly opens up this physical training room for any retired police officers. To come in and that's the camaraderie that they develop. Retired officers come back. And then talk to the younger officers and and then start to build the morale. Your your Sally Port downstairs is woefully tight. Again, as I say, officer safety is important to me. It should be important to the town and I know that the condition of your Sally Port does not provide this type of. Safety for the officer to pull in adequately, remove somebody from the car, have space to maneuver and then bring them into the facility. Your plan that was proposed tonight provides this type of facility now for Sally Port. In addition. This is showing you a two base alley port. The two base alley port is what's being proposed on your plan. It has a wire mesh partition between the two. So if you had to bring something in for a forensic hold or vehicle processing. You could utilize one of the bays, secure that vehicle, secure that large piece of evidence. And then process it while you still have the ability to use the other bay as an active Sally Port bay. So we're using these spaces for dual purpose and giving you what's being required for state statutes. And now what's being required for local and national accreditation standards. Because this is all coming down to how are you processing evidence? Are you providing facilities? And accreditation standards and the Police Accountability Act is now requiring. Facilities to be accredited. And you need a facility then that gets you to accreditation standards before you can even get to the process of accreditation. So what what the plan would do is to support those accreditation requirements. We also have. Areas of kitchen and break room. So if. The current locker room. Gets vacated, the current locker room will be renovated for a proper day room and kitchen and an eating area. And the area that we have for the current detective bureau was going to be converted to a training classroom. That training classroom now would get utilized for police commission meetings, would get utilized for public events. And the public would have access to this room without interfering with the secure areas of the department. It has an ability to come into the lobby and from the lobby enter directly into this training classroom for public meetings. Would be ADA accessible. The police department could utilize it for in-service training or they could utilize it for outside agencies coming to the department and utilizing it for their own training purposes. So it has a function that again provides a safe environment. If you want public to come into these spaces for police commission meetings and not then have access to roam the borders. And and not knowing where the public may be within that department. So you've now isolated your public from your your staff areas. And carports, carports are not just a nicety for departments anymore. They're becoming more of the norm. Jeff might recognize this facility. He helped us with this one in North Haven. In North Haven, carports was a need. In New England, it used to be just a winter. Keep the snow and ice off the cars so you can get a faster response time. It's now become a more of a year round need because of the amount of electronics that you're putting into these vehicles. And the computers and electronic equipment that are in these cars that are sitting there in the summertime where you have to move the windows off. The cabin temperatures of these cars get excess of a hundred and twenty degrees. And it's really doing a service to all the electronics that you've just invested in in these vehicles. So the cabin temperature gets too hot, all of the electronics start to go. Start to fry within the cabins. So you can see how it provides shade in this picture, a nice sunny day in in the summer. But what it's doing is reducing the cabin temperatures in in the vehicles. But what it's doing is reducing the cabin temperatures in the vehicles. In the wintertime, obviously, it's keeping the snow and ice off for a faster response time. And they do have to come in a shift change and come back to the facility. Well, that's my presentation. I'm here for any questions still. I think we've concluded what our initial assignment was. So we've kind of just turned it back to the Public Building Commission. That's why they requested me to come here.
All right. Well, thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the Public Building Commission is essentially at the point where it's, Brian has done his work. His team has done a great job. And the Public Building Commission, as they, you know, they're a sort of energetic group, they want to go ahead. Okay, so they had asked Brian to break, he had originally three phases plus the any-phase approach. They, Public Building Commission asked him to break out the design-bidding phase in advance so we would see the cost. That's between two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. Public Bill, I mean, the police department has a bonding appropriation for over nine hundred thousand dollars. I also talked to Kevin about funding if the town council wants to go ahead with the next advancing design to actually get into construction documents. And the phasing also can be broken out. Phase one includes more than the locker. We all recognize that. So the Public Building Commission was looking at a two fiscal year approach for phase one, which is about three point four million. So you break it up to one point seven each. Now, anything can be changed, obviously. But this is sort of given to you for your feedback, your input, and also how, if you want to go ahead with more of the next level of design, how you want that funded. Kevin has some ideas if he's on the line. We talked a little bit about it. We can pick his brain about that if you want to. Or you can sort of let digest this and come back to the Public Building Commission or me directly, however you want to do it. And give us some feedback because I know it's a lot. I mean, I was, when we first started, I was like, oh, locker rooms, great. And then I learned these aren't locker rooms. They put their, I think they're, all their gear, which is bulletproof vests and all that, it has a dehumidification thing, recharging all of your communications equipment. I was just in the high school in the town, and as we went to this project, it is not just a locker, you know. So they also store their firearms too. So this is like a sort of a big closet that we're calling a locker. So it's a lot more advanced than I had originally anticipated. So there it is. Looking for feedback. If you want us to, with Public Building Commission to proceed with the next level of design, we can figure out how to fund that with your, you know, input. Thank you. Personal questions from the council at this point?
I just, this is phenomenal. We've done a wonderful job. I just have one question. In the current conditions, in terms of availability, pricing, lack of materials, et cetera, do you feel that this fifteen percent contingency is really a real number that we can be close to, honestly?
Yes, and I also want to put an asterisk around the cost estimate, the professional cost estimate that we did. And we had contracted. That has a duration to it. That professional cost estimate was only assuming an escalation into the summer or fall of this year. If the projects delay further, all those numbers will have to change. But the numbers are accurate for now. And if the project proceeded now, the numbers would still be accurate. Any delay, as we're seeing with everything out there, any delay will probably be driving those numbers higher in the future.
So when you say now, six months, twelve months, or like now?
Probably you'd want to make a decision in the next two months to keep those numbers valid. And nobody's really holding numbers past sixty days now.
Let's do it. Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Quick questions?
Want to say, Brian, thanks for the, the F T. Like, you know, I mentioned in the past, I work for Mackenzie and the chief best manager. I can tell you right now. Coatings, two major manufacturers, the way you use are anywhere from twelve to fifteen percent. Some of that due to COVID and supply issues, but most of that started in Texas. The big store, a lot of the products are made down there in Texas. That was a huge issue. There are things that we can't get. You know, simple things like pot fillers are way behind schedule.
Texas has been impacted by construction coatings and also spray foam insulation.
Yeah, we do that too.
Spray foam insulation is because of Texas right now. It's not an overseas issue. It's a Texas issue.
I'd like to say, you know, I'd like the phased approach, spread this out a little bit. You know, I'd like to thank, you know, the Board of Ed for getting involved and giving up some space. I've did a lot of projects, school projects, and I do see a lot of the Board of Ed spaces in those school construction projects. They're in the school. Where they're nearest school. So I think that makes sense, maybe that they move some of that over to the high school or something like that. You know, that's a whole nother discussion, but I'm glad that at least they participated. Little thanks there to open up this project.
I've been a part of over ninety police facility projects and I can give you an assurance, putting this plan together, that this is not a temporary plan. I know that you might think that, oh, let's just expand and see what we can do with the police department on a temporary basis. In my opinion, this is not a temporary fix for the police department. This is a twenty-plus-year solution for the police department. We looked at potential growth. And there's potential growth within the locker spaces. That's where your growth will occur probably in the future would be patrol and patrol staff. And that's where lockers are important. We looked over your administrative ranks. And we accommodated them in the current plan. So just me speaking, you can ask the police department their opinion, but I see this is a long-term solution. This is not just a Band-Aid in a short-term solution just because you had available space. So I'm actually encouraged by this compared to other plans that we've been asked to put together in the department.
You know, the only question was the fact that you took into, to the whole plan as far as, well, this is in terms of trading. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do see the chief on the line there. Chief, I don't know if you have any comments on the plan and what your input is. I know we've been hatching this plan since well before you have come aboard. So I know you've had a chance to review it. So I'd be, you know, interested to hear your comment.
Sure, I, um, excuse me. First of all, I don't know if Brian remembers, I was involved with the Danbury P D locker room renovation many years ago. And then when we built the new police department with the site selection committee and the building committee. And the pictures he's showing you of some of those agencies, that's how the situation developed in Danbury, where I worked before I came to Berlin, and it made a big difference. He said in morale, and I can tell you that it will make a big difference in morale. But also, flow of function is really important. And when I looked at the plans, you know, like you said, I'm inheriting this. I looked at the plans. It looks good. My only concern, of course, is that, you know, expansion capability for the future. I'm glad to hear this presentation tonight because I got to hear a little bit more about how they arrived at some of the ideas. Everything we do now for law enforcement, professional law enforcement, has to be referred through that police accountability. So this, when he was talking about the booking rooms versus what's existing now and the future. Just a personal note, when I came to Berlin, it reminded me of the old Danbury Police Department back in nineteen eighty-five. And then we got a big modern building and before police accountability, we had, the plans were about, you know, officer safety, officer safety, officer safety. And just that the pictures he showed you, some of those agencies, North Haven and all, this tends to be the standard that's happening across, not just Connecticut, but across the country. I don't think the whittling away of police accountability and Kalia and accreditation is ever going to go away. I'm kind of surprised that they didn't really put more emphasis on building design for safety purposes, not for just the officers, but for the, our clientele that we deal with on a regular basis. I definitely like the idea of a community room, that classroom that he's got in the plan for training, to bring in training from outside, inside. One of the things you've heard me talk about was trying to open up the department more to partnership with other agencies because we have to meet a lot of unfunded mandated training now. And also, we could conduct training, we could conduct activities with that space open to the public and maybe even generate revenue in that matter. So I'm very happy with the design. I would put a doorway in, but I'll talk to Brian about that later on. That's not something that's going to make a big difference here. So.
All right. Well, thanks, chief. Appreciate your input, the support. Obviously, it's important because it's in your building, you're part of the building. I want to make sure you guys are happy with it. And last but not least, Kevin, ways to pay for it? Did you have some unique ones? Which always comes down to that, of course, but. Any input on this, Kevin?
Well, there's a few.
You gonna reach into your checking account and write back the checks or?
There's a few options to pay for it. You know, the short answer for most people, and Brian actually had a line for this TBD by the owner, is bonding. I think that certainly has to be taken into consideration in the context of the other items you mentioned earlier about the Community Senior Center. There's been other areas discussed. You know, the next item on the agenda is another one. So I think part of it has to be considered in the context of where does the town want to go with bonding. You certainly have the ability to bond. That's one option. Another option that does exist, especially if it's phased in, is to incorporate all or part of it into the mill rate, to actually put the capital cost into the budget and charge within a budget year after year and phase it in. Beyond that, there are small amounts, Mike and I discussed a couple of projects that have kind of stalled a little bit. They need additional funding as well, and so you may decide some of the funding that exists with any of those projects, you could move over at least for the design phase. A quarter million dollars is a very different discussion than five million dollars. And then I guess to the extent you break five million dollars, there is the charter provision where it would require a referendum. So that would elongate the time for approval as you get into that area. I'm never a, I'm never a ray of sunshine when it comes to the money, so sorry.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. So has the Board of Finance, it hasn't been looked at this yet, right? They haven't seen this yet.
No, the only direction they have provided is that they do not want to bond. We have not included any bond issuance or bond servicing, additional servicing costs in the proposed budget. They would like to pause again for another year. The town has a high debt level. But, you know, that's subject to further discussion too, based on a broader context.
All right, so it's a lot to take in tonight. And we don't really have any action. Actually, I'm on this anyway, so let's think about it for a couple of weeks. You know, I am thinking about in the next month or so, I would like, depending upon how quickly the commission now comes back for the Senior Community Center. We have this on our plate. And a couple of other things, maybe have a, it'd be nice to have a, I know we're in the budget season. We all got a lot on the meeting. But at some point, maybe after March, because then there was a lot coming on in March. But that, the Board of Finance and Town Council, you know, would have a joint meeting just to discuss some of these things and get everybody on the same page. Because, you know, I always hate, we just send this. And not that some of us don't talk to Board of Finance members offline, but it's nice to get everybody together and you know, see where we could all agree on where to go with different projects that we have, you know, coming up. So. You know, think about that. I'd like to do it in April if we could, you know, maybe when that comes back from the committee. And this is on the table here, which is good. And we do have school projects that we're talking about. So it'd be nice just to have, you know, hopefully, you know, hour or two discussion on what's upcoming. Because, you know, if they're saying they don't want to bond and we're going to, I don't know, how would we, if I could pay for this without bonding? See a big chunk of money we have sitting anywhere to do that, but maybe, you know, we'll figure it out, I'm sure. So maybe let's do that. Let's just think about it, look at this, you know. And then we could figure out what the next step is to try and move it forward. Because I also agree that, as we know, with the inflation and construction costs going up overnight pretty much. It seems like something else goes up. So the faster we move, the better on at least getting, moving on different projects. So we'll agree on that and try and get some of these moving forward as quickly as possible to at least save on perhaps some of the costs, although I'm sure they're going up as we sit here. But yeah, the longer we wait, the worse it is. So we'll think about this a little bit and quickly maybe have some discussions with the Board of Finance, I'd like to talk to them too. If that makes sense. They just send it up stuff, you know, they don't really, you know, they got their thoughts, we got our thoughts. Getting on the same page and making a lot of it. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. You need these back, everyone? Thanks for the info. We appreciate it. Important project. Chief, we'll get it working for you. Don't worry.
Yeah, you're all welcome. Anytime you want to come down and take a walk around and look for yourselves and what we have and what he presented tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, some of us have been in there. Definitely circa nineteen seventies style wasted space. Yeah, I think if anyone has it done, please go do it, but on council. But yeah, I think it's definitely needed and needed as fast as we can get moving on. So, yeah, we'll work on it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number three. The recommendation that we have of the use of the ARPA funds, the final rule in January twenty twenty-two. I'll pass it over to Kevin. Just done a really good job summarizing this document in sixty pages in the final ruling. I'm sure all of you had a chance to read it, but he'll give you the, the second thought.
Kevin, are you going to be another ray of sunshine out of all this or?
This one, I'm talking about money that we're receiving, so. We've talked about the ARPA funds and the program that was put together. And based on that program, Berlin has received or will receive just over six million dollars in grant money to address issues that have come up driven by the coronavirus pandemic or affecting those individuals, businesses who have been disadvantaged or harmed because of the coronavirus. We talked about many of the areas that were available for use of the funds when the interim final rule came out. Recently, the final, final rule was issued by the Treasury. And just yesterday afternoon, they gave some additional reporting and additional guidelines. So we've got a pretty good feel for where the Treasury is allowing this money to be used. The good news is the areas that we talked about during the joint Board of Finance Town Council meeting almost a year ago now all still remain and are still available. One thing I do want to point out to you is that when the final rule was released, the Treasury did provide an expanded opportunity, which we identified. There was one of the categories that was there that you could offset a revenue loss. And there was an extensive calculation and everybody, all the municipalities, went through that calculation to determine what the revenue loss was based on that formula. Based on feedback and an attempt to make things administratively easier, Treasury is now saying that up to ten million dollars of the ARPA money can be classified as revenue loss. And that is, provides for more streamlined reporting and for additional options. We couldn't get to ten million because our grant is only a little over six. But that means that the entire grant can be classified as a revenue loss. It will be assumed to be a revenue loss without an extensive calculation. And that money can be used to help with what are called governmental services. They provided some examples of what those are, and I put them in the Uh they they provided some examples of what those are, and I I put them in the uh the motion. Some of those that apply locally, there's road building and maintenance, environmental remediation, uh police, fire and public services, and one of the questions that came up during the joint meeting, could it be used to purchase a fire truck? And uh they received that from other communities around the country and came out and said, yes, you could. We could classify all of this as lost revenue and use it for governmental services, uh which could include purchase of those items. With that in mind, the town has already appropriated seven hundred thousand dollars of the initial six, little over six million dollars into the FY twenty two budget. So I intend to classify that as revenue loss, either under the formula or under the assumed level, um the town qualifies for that, so there's no issue there. However, if the town wants to classify, taking into account the the lost revenue calculation and use the money for general services, we need to identify that by the April thirtieth, twenty twenty two reporting period. So that's our first reporting requirement that just came out yesterday afternoon, that we have a one-time option to select that decision between the formula or the assumed amount. So there's a little bit of a window, but not too much to decide if the town wants to go in that direction. So that is an option. However, you may recall when we met, um the recommendation and and tonight, that recommendation continues is the town also has the option of appropriating that money for other areas. The one that was identified is a project that the Public Building Commission has been working on, which is upgrading the HVAC systems at all three of the elementary schools. That project combined for the three schools is now projected to be in the fifteen to twenty million dollar range. So, you know, this would be an opportunity to appropriate, as requested tonight, a little over five point three million dollars. The three hundred thousand would be earmarked initially for hiring a construction manager. So being able to identify a lot of the work now that the PBC has really solid plans in place to move forward. Having a construction manager with experience dedicated to providing guidance and direction for the best way for the town to proceed. And then providing what ultimately, although it's quite a large seed, represents seed funding for a substantial project. Um this would be a huge down payment on what is anticipated to be the first of the three elementary schools to be done, which would be Willard. It is an opportunity to use that money. I I do want to be clear that the expectation is that the construction will likely start in the summer of twenty twenty three. So this is an opportunity to put the money into that project. If the project costs fifteen to twenty, you're talking twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the, you know, the projected cost. So from that, we can still expect that additional bonding, uh potential operational savings, and certainly uh potential state grants. The governor and his budget proposal had brought forward a proposal of ninety million dollars. We just received some information today that he's try he's directed DAS to start working on that process and develop some parameters. Obviously, that requires legislative approval and and putting the money in place. Um but it seems like there is gaining some traction for potentially additional grant money. Uh but this is, this is a broader project, a larger project, and an opportunity to use this money for something that does qualify. I did share with you, it's a it's a four hundred thirty-seven page final ruling, so I only shared two pages with you, which happened to be the list of capital expenditures that qualify. When we met at the joint meeting, I said I was I was confident that renovating HVAC would qualify and it would meet the standards given COVID and the circumstances. When you look at the list, uh one of the items that is on there is installation and improvements of ventilation system, so uh they heard from a number of communities looking to do this. There's a number of communities around Connecticut, but also around the country. So this is one that I think would absolutely qualify. Um I know there's a lot of capital demands, but uh this is one that I think addresses a longstanding capital need for the schools. It helps air quality and health for children, teachers, administrators and visitors into the schools. And it is something that is all intents and purposes shovel-ready and able to move forward, hire a construction manager, working to get the equipment and preparing, starting in twenty twenty-three to address these issues. So with that, as I said, there there are now additional options. They came forward with the ten million provision, which is a a a different matter, certainly opens up opportunities. Um but the proposal tonight is to still move forward, appropriating the funds for the HVAC project and trying to make the initial substantial down payment on um a a key project for the town and for the schools. With that, I'll stop for questions.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Um first the first question now is um fifteen to twenty? I thought we were at ten just the other day. Twenty. Uh I know things have gone up, but that's uh almost like double going up with them.
Yeah, when this first started, I would say two, two to three years ago, we first started, we were looking, we were thinking somewhere between two and three million per school. You know, where as they got through the design, as they were working, those are the latest numbers that I'm hearing. Uh one of the initial plans, and I still think this is a an appropriate plan, is Willard would be the biggest of the schools, the oldest of the systems, so part of it has always been the intention to go out and take care of Willard and use that as a benchmark to be able to determine what do we realistically think it's going to cost to do Griswold and Hubbard. Hopefully, we're pleasantly surprised. I mean, if it's if it's five million to do Willard, you could reasonably expect it would be something less, as long as we don't wait a long time, as as Brian mentioned in the last presentation, as you go out, uh everything begins to cost more, and inflation right now is higher than it's been in, what, thirty, forty years, so. But yeah.
So interesting development with the money, which uh makes me think about some things, and speaking to Donna, or representative as well, there is some.
Yes, and I see Jim is online, uh Jim Mahoney, are you with us? Nope, I see you. Um there was a meeting that we had just about a week ago with um Kathy, Representative Abidakambi and Senator Lopes. And evidently, there's some um new grant monies that are going to be available um as a fifty percent match, um specifically geared towards uh you know, perhaps as a HVAC situation. Um but it had just been introduced, and they were just beginning to talk about it, so. I don't know, Jim, did you hear anything else from her other than last week when we spoke?
I haven't heard any updates, but I think it's consistent with what Kevin just said, which is, you know, they're expecting the to create the ninety million dollar program and the fifty fifty match, and you know, trying to get ourselves in a position where we have the plans in place, so that we'll be well-positioned to compete for the grant is where we're at.
Okay, so um I know that we're in session tomorrow, and I'm sure the wall is beginning to roll. Um I'm hoping that we can maybe have some more information about this over the next, I hate to say week, but you know, um because it just started last week in terms of this additional funding. I think I guess we need to prioritize and see if we could use some of that as a and maybe shift what we have here into some of the other priorities that we have as a town. If those other funds are available specifically for HVAC and education.
I do want to be clear that the money has to be used still within the parameters of Corona, addressing the coronavirus pandemic. Uh while capital is an option, it has to address either those that were harmed or something that was negatively impacted. Um you know, the general services does provide a a broader opportunity to use it now. Um but it's still intended to be within those those parameters.
So I think that the things that we just talked about in terms of fire, um HVAC, all those fall under those parameters of COVID, correct?
Um when you say fire or with that.
Well, I think we talked about the possibility of, you know, I don't know, fire truck was mentioned. Um I know that there were some items that were sent to Hartford uh regarding priorities by the manager, town manager, and the you know, and mayor uh for us. Correct?
Well, yeah, because you have here, you have the uh overview right now of the revenue loss amount, and you can give these examples, right, provision of uh fire, police, police, fire and other public services, purchase of fire trucks, police vehicle, you have some other things here. Or general government administration staff, administrative facilities, so. You know, so in light of this, before we send this anywhere, again, it's another little bit, and I know we have the April thirtieth deadline you mentioned.
I think we need to probably table this until we figure out exactly what's available to us and figure out what funding we need to use for what. Jim, I can um reach out to uh Kathy tomorrow um and and shoot you an email as well, and and maybe we've moved along a little further from where we were a week ago, I hope.
I mean, I still think the the bulk, you know, would probably go towards the HVAC, but there's other stuff we could break out of there and get get it paid for, assuming we can get some money from the state to get more for the the Board of HVAC, which would be great, you know, match whatever portion of this, which would be a large portion of the thing. Uh which would pay for a lot of them.
We need to go to referendum, we need to order over five million dollars.
Uh, I don't. Yeah, I don't know if that would, with the referendum would be, if it's over five million, would it be? Okay. So probably wouldn't apply, right?
Say this first school costs ten million dollars, and we put four million of this grant money, and we have to bond for over five million, would have to go with the referendum?
So from my, what I'm understanding with this additional, this new grant that they're developing, fifty percent, we would have to have, okay? And um in addition to the COVID connection, right? I think that uh we should be able to figure something out with it's it's additional funding.
Yeah.
In addition to what we already have on the plate.
Oh yeah, let's just hold off on this, let's see what develops with that.
Jim, I'll, are you around? I'll call you tomorrow.
Digest this a little bit, because we had other projects on that list too, that I think apply
Yeah.
Under the new.
Exactly.
Liberal ruling.
I mean, we weren't at fifteen to twenty mil.
Uh no, that's another disturbing figure, but.
Last time we talked, we were at nine million. I mean, that's substantially higher. Substantially, and I I do know that we have issues, um and I know that from what I'm hearing, it's roughly thirty percent cost increase on any kind of construction project right now, if you can get materials.
I mean, we know the HVAC's gotta be done, we're gonna do it.
Figure out which one pool of monies we need to use for it.
Yeah, yeah, if there's other money available from the state grants, that'd be great. So, well, yeah, let's just table this again. Now, we know we've got a short timeframe, so we're not gonna miss anything.
There may be some monies coming out of the education committees up there too, um that might, this might even apply to some of that, the HVAC, believe it or not. So I know there's a few things being drafted.
So there is a multitude of different opportunities that's stored at the state level.
Absolutely.
Might this be something that we add to the agenda of this potential meeting that we have over the earnings?
This would be one that I would certainly add to that agenda, but yes, as the meeting gets bigger now, but that's all right.
I think, yeah, I think over the next couple of weeks, we'll be panning out a little bit better than they are right now, because this is all new as of last week, so.
I'd be a little nervous, but we have, we.
Got a little hot three.
Right.
That's what I thought, right, yeah. Yeah, I want to add this, this into our discussion with the Board of Finance, so obviously the Police Department and uh Yeah, that's their budget. Martin, they're just getting the budget presented, right? Just yourself and Board of Ed. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, yeah, we can talk to them, you know, um and do this meeting, and hopefully the community center too gets on like agenda, so we'd have, at least we could talk about.
Yeah.
Yes, I guess, of which there's many, uh and there's many others too, but these are the three, you know, big and
Many cuts of gold.
Big price, yeah.
Would you like me to try and schedule that for the week of March or so?
Yeah, if we could fit it in, uh you know, because I'm I'm kind of waiting, we want to hear what what happens at the state.
We've moved further along from uh, I'm trying to think if it was last Thursday. Yeah, it was last Thursday, because I was in many meetings all week Friday, so I guess it was a week ago. Pretty sure it was Thursday, maybe it was Wednesday, so it's just about a week ago.
So.
I haven't heard anything, so.
We'll give us a couple of weeks, but yeah, so. Yeah, third week in March, last week in March, whatever, um when they have, I know March is a busy month, but.
Just add one more thing. I mean, I got really excited with the nine billion dollars from the state, and Kevin walked me through the numbers. All right, fifty-nine towns.
I was just gonna.
We have five schools.
Ten bucks.
Twenty-five percent of them apply.
Yeah.
So I I don't think we should go into this thinking, I don't get, you know, five, ten million dollars to fund it. So I just want to manage expectations.
Understood. Yeah, we know what, we know at the end we'll be. Most of it, uh we understand that, but but you know, I just think it's worth, because everything's kind of coming together now, it's just a good time to get us on the same page, uh or at least hear their thoughts from the Board of Finance perspective during the budget season, you know, as well, so I think that would make sense. If you guys agree, that that makes sense.
I guess one thing that I I want to keep in the back of my mind in advance of this meeting that we ultimately have is you know, if we do opt for a more conservative approach with pursuing this project and with the HVAC in schools, um considering a a a possibility of starting with Willard, seeing that process all the way through the plan, and then revisiting it at a later time if the financial circumstances seem more favorable down the road, which obviously it's very uncertain at this point, but something that that might be worth considering in advance, but obviously, there's a lot to be about.
Yeah, I mean, I I mean, I agree, we should, you know, we're we're gonna do, we gotta do the HVAC, we know that's on the agenda for a long time, but and definitely start with Willard, because that's the oldest school, and we want to see what what we find there, and so that would make sense, yeah. But just before we do that, let's just have a, you know, have a plan.
Let's see what I can do to get some answers. They may not be able to give me those right now, but Kathy has appropriations over there, so we'll see.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for that discussion and more to come.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks.
Moving on to agenda item number four, it's a eight twenty-four review of the YMCA facility use and rental agreement for use of space, Albert School and Benny School, daycare facilities.
Good evening, everyone. Okay. So mayor, members of the uh council, folks here, uh I'm here to talk about the referral of the YMCA daycare projects at uh both McGee School and Hubbard. I know the council knows a lot about these projects. And I think the summary that was put together um by Roche is is uh very concise on a number of things to do with the project. You also had a memorandum uh that was provided that really sums up where that project is now and why we're in front of you today, built at the eight twenty-four review. I'm sure some of you have seen this before on other projects. I was interesting that uh the reason that this pro- this project has to go in front of um the planning zoning commission just for an eight twenty-four review, which is something less than what they normally do, is just because we're leasing a town facility. Okay, it's part of the state statute, it's not a negotiable thing. It's a separate review. Really what they're reviewing, the best I understand, is uh whether this, these projects are within the town plan of development. Um a couple of other things I've noted here, like I said, the lease is really the reason we do this. Um the Board of Education, as you know, I and the town have agreed to lease space in each of these schools uh to the Meriden, the Britain, Earl of YMCA. Uh we've run through some of the reviews already, you're gonna be going through more of that, as as well as the Board of Ed is going to be in the next two weeks. Um a couple of things I'd like to mention here relative. A couple of things I'd like to mention here relative, this, this memorandum also went to, it will go to the planning commission, uh, things that they will consider for the eight twenty-four review. Uh, the YMCA daycare operation now will be located on town property, as I said, used for Mickey Mill School on Norton Road and Hubbard Elementary School on Grove Street. A daycare operation at these locations seems to be consistent with the town plan of development, and the lease agreements mandate naturally the lines of all applicable regulations. Uh, the specific spaces chosen for the renovation and occupancy by the YMCA are not currently needed by the Board of Ed for educational use. And a daycare operation use is considered to be a complimentary use to the public schools. There's a lot of other things in the memo, um, I don't know if you want me to go back to the entire project, as I said, uh, you'll be hearing those things in two weeks from now. Uh, but right now it's a necessity to review it, I mean, to refer it to the planning commission, um, I've spoken to the town planner, she's aware of the project, she's aware of the kind of review that has to be done, uh, and they do by statute have to give you a report. What they think about the town plan and so on and so forth, not necessarily the specifics of the project, but just generally. So unless there's other questions on the project or anything else to do with, you know, the development, I know that Doug Solak is here also, uh, he's been very, naturally, we're very involved in the project. Um, and once again, the project itself will be part of you in the next two weeks, so it's just the okay for, for the planning zone mission, and they're expecting it.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff, yeah, no, that's, yeah, no, we're always gonna go through there every week, but this, this, uh, this has been, you know, I think it's a great collaborative effort we came to with, with the Board of Ed and the town and the Y, and, uh, you know, it gets us that transitional building, we keep that on Main Street and expand it, and, uh, you know, we get the daycare and the school system, which is, which is great, so it's all in a win-win, I think, for everyone, right?
I think you're correct, it's, it's, everybody's very pleased, uh, we did have, uh, took a little longer than we expected, because we had to change some dotted line locations, but also the renovations that were necessitated in the two schools we're going with now were considerably more expensive, it's why it's expensive, not the town's expensive, but I think it's, it's a very, very good plan from everything we see. Uh, everybody's excited about it, and we're getting ready to go forward, we hope, planning commission, uh, they're adding a report, we force that, and, and like I said, we'll, both, you know, we'll be back to you, uh, yeah, in two weeks to see if we can get the rest of the necessary approvals put in place, so we look forward to that.
Great, sounds good, well, so, yeah, we, we know you're coming back, so we'll go ahead and, unless you have any other questions for, or take a motion?
Then the move to return the, to the planning and zoning commission for section eight twenty-four review, the plan for the town, you need to lease space in the B and Hundred Schools, YMCA, purpose of operating in daycare services program.
Thank you, second on that. Any other comments or questions by the council, there are none, all is in favor, I oppose, all right, so move?
Thank you very much.
See you soon.
Then item number five, the bid waiver that they are requesting some work that needs to be done, the school auditorium space lighting, and Doug Solak. Give you some background, what do you do?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, concert, how are you tonight? Yes, so just, uh, this, this actual project is, um, doing some, during some maintenance and repair, we, we found a few more deficiencies, and we're trying to just, uh, get to a little bridge here that we can enhance what's, what's existing in place, fortunately, God rest my predecessor, John Pager, and our current electricians, Dave and Eric. Some components were salvaged from the high school project, the renovation, so our local lighting contractor, show lighting, is able to repurpose some of these materials, save us substantial amount of money and utilize the systems that's in place for now until we can fund further upgrades, so this is the, just through, get everything functioning the best it can with what we have. Um, and, and keep things in use for the spring concert and, and use the auditorium, um, in the short term.
Okay, that's great, I know it's, uh, Kevin, he's forty years old now, and, yeah, so, that's good, we're gonna get some upgrades there, and I, I honestly, taking a tour of McGee was, uh, amazing that Doug, you know, I think I told you that, that night maybe, you heard it, hopefully that, uh, you guys have kept that school in amazing condition, I really expected much worse, I mean, it's, you know, I know there's things that we need to do there, some, you know, different things we can work on, no doubt, some of the labs, you know, the lab, but the chemistry classrooms there need some work, and some of the things always need work, the auditorium, we talked about that a little bit too. So this is good, we can, you know, fix that up a little bit with this stuff, but, uh, I mean, that school is looking, looking great, and, and I, I still love that comment that we kept the old lockers, because they last forever. And the new ones are destroyed in, right, right, a much less period of time, so, and they did look good, the original lockers, which I remember staying there a few, few years ago. When I was there, uh, but, uh, so, yeah, that's great, so, what do you guys think, questions for Doug? All good? Good, all right, let's take, let's take a motion.
Okay, move to approve a bid waiver for showway in Port of Burland, make it optimize purchase order increase up to twenty-five thousand dollars. The repairs to the Catholic school auditorium, age lighting system, if this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that? Any other comments or questions, there are none, all is in favor, I oppose, all right, so, so move.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you very much, have a good night, thank you.
You too. Tonight at number six, the senior senior, they request approval, increase the amount, QA and M, Mike.
Good evening again, um, this is related to the work that the advisory committee is doing. And Public Building Commission had its last, asked me to take a look at the, the billing from QA, QA and M, who's the architect for the whole project, they did the schematic design, the cost estimates that everyone is using, it's a, a sort of a jumping off point for the center. Um, they're, they have about nine thousand dollars left in their fee, it's almost nothing, and they haven't billed us, I think, in like six or seven months, they're just very patient. Um, so the Public Building Commission thought it would be wise to throw more money onto their fee, pre-referendum fee, because they have their, it's, it's, their proposal broken out to pre-referendum and post-referendum. So, um, they thought a hundred thousand dollars would be enough, for example, a town advisory committee, town council, public building commission came back, so listen, we want to show a phase plan, or redo the cost estimates, or anything really, and funding support, I know that the advisory committee is struggling with the funding aspect of this all, so, um, we thought it wise to actually get, increase their fee for those requests coming forward.
Okay, um, I guess the only objection I have to is, we haven't gotten there yet, and, and I, I'd rather we wait and see what the, what the, you know, what the recommendation or what the information that, that comes back to the, uh, to the council first, and I, uh, I, I mean, looking at the, the two meetings I've been at, one was with Mr. Belaney there, and the last one with a presentation by the Y. Just, just on that alone, and the basic places that they've visited, uh, you know, I mean, we're not gonna, well, I don't know, it's, the HVAC projects went from fifteen to, from, from I think eight to twenty million now, and this one's already at forty million, but, so I, I, you know, where all that money's gonna come from, but, um, I think we know where it'll come from. But, uh, if we do it, but I don't, I don't think we're there yet, I know the wait until we get the recommendation, or the recommendation, that the presentation on what they've accomplished at the advisory committee. And against of the council, and then we could see, uh, you know, at least initially, again, and this is another topic that would be with the Board of Finance in our multiple topics now, as, as it grows, uh, as we get down the agenda and other one.
Well, I just want to point out that this could be held.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just pointing it out, you know, could, we would not proceed with anything unless we were, you know, told to.
Yeah.
And this was not, so, so, uh, this was not, um, given to us by QA and M, this was Public Building Commission, trying to put money aside in case these requests come in, because we're, we're running out of deep, so, so.
Let's, I do, I still, it's there, it's not going anywhere, right?
Yeah, and we have the fund, the actual money is there, too.
Yeah, so I, I think we should wait, and see what progresses before we.
Well.
I mean, it's there, we need it, we have it.
Right, well, you've necessitated now, so the Public Building Commission wants to be ready when, you know, the advisory committee comes in, has the recommendations.
I, I think. Uh, yeah, yeah, we don't, sure, I want to hear that.
Yeah, and I, I think the hundred is high, because I think it would be T and M up to whatever, if they wanted to revise the plans, but, uh, I don't think it would be a hundred, but Public Building Commission wants to make sure enough money is up the way for that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that grant is there, right, it's not going anywhere, you can't use it for anything else, and now we're gonna use it up, right, so when the time comes, just come back and see where, where, where we're at after we get the, uh, the, uh, information.
I may be back.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, you may be, that may be the case. I'll let them know.
Yeah, all right, so Mike, just to clarify, you have, you have nine thousand dollars on?
Uh, well, that's pre-referendum, so, and QA and M has been, COVID just disrupted the entire public outreach, they had a whole, they were gonna do charrettes, sorry, so charrettes and big public presentations, and it was, they were ready, and then COVID, it was like March two thousand twenty, when it, and then they went, they did a website, which was not in their scope, and they've been maintaining that on the town, on the town website, so they've been doing things, and they also want the advisory committee, as well, to assist, um, you know, sort of their questions on funding and how the whole design happened, so they've been very supportive, I would have to say, and I think they're holding back the link personally, because I, I know how much time they spent um, in this elongated two-year public outreach project, which, or, you know, days, it should have been a couple of months, and then referendum, and then, you know, get the yes or no. So, uh, they've been, actually, they've done a good job.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we, we're not gonna cheat them on their money.
Yeah, they, and they, they, I think they felt comfortable with us.
Yeah, no, I mean, we have a good relationship with them, right, you know, they have a relationship with us, and so, yeah, we will certainly pay whatever bill, and we have the money there, you know, the grant money there, what is it, like three hundred fifty grand or three hundred grand?
Left, in rough numbers, yeah, I mean, the grant was seven fifty.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's probably, I think, unencumbered, was three hundred and change, something like that.
So we. Yeah.
Four hundred?
Yeah.
You take the hundred out, it's three hundred.
Oh, so, so we have plenty of money.
Yeah, we're good for it.
Pay our bills, we're good for it, checks in the mail, as they say, checks in the mail, but. No, no, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly, uh, take care of that, but I'd rather just wait, let me get a little bit further down the road on what we think will happen. All right. Thanks, Jeff, appreciate it, so we'll just table that.
Thank you. Tonight at number seven, authorization to apply for joint water supply and open space use, town parcel on Wood Lawn Road.
Hey, Ray, good evening, I think we have a tag team out today, uh, with Jim Mahoney, okay, I think Jim was gonna start it off.
I was just gonna say that we, we started to work on this project, Ray can fill in the details, but, um, we, we're looking at the sixty-six acre parcel we, that the town owns on Wood Lawn that was intended for water supply use, and, um, obviously hasn't been used for that purpose, and I guess there's not any imminent plans to use it for water supply, and then we have, um, a lot of new development happening in the area, uh, potentially with the four oh four Berlin Turnpike project, uh, that's been approved, and the five fifty Berlin Turnpike project, it's, has an application for planning and zoning now, so that kind of brought brought our attention to the parcel, and we thought it was, it was worthwhile to take a step-by-step process and start to look at its potential perhaps for open space or joint, joint use, open space and water supply, and we had a, um, we had a concept plan done by the, uh, FHI, and they thought there's potential, there, there is a significant amount of wet area on the parcel, so it's certainly not all developable, but, you know, or walkable, uh, usable for open space, uh, but there are areas, you know, which we could create trails, and there's the, there's a pond there that could be used for fishing. And so it seemed to have good potential, um, for some use, and, uh, so we've talked to the Conservation Commission, and Ray will fill you in about the water control, and they, they're supportive of, of taking the next step, which the next step is, is for Ray to, um, work with, with us and, um, put together an application to the Department of Health to, um, request their approval for joint use, which is required before we would proceed down this path. And, uh, we, we've been, again, doing this work a little bit, step by step, this is a step-by-step process, we would, before we use the property for open space, have to, um, obtain a better access point, hopefully we can obtain it at our, um, existing access on Wood Lawn, but we don't have an easement there, so that's something we'd have to work on, we have to work on more, more definitive plans for the open space use. But before we go to that step, those steps, we thought first step is to make sure that Department Health is on board. And, um, so that's, that's really where we are, and Ray can fill you in on the details further.
Just a little bit of history, this, uh, well goes back to nineteen sixty-six, this area was called Sportsman's Well, Sportsman's Club was purchased by the town slash Berlin Water Control, I'm not sure whose money was actually used, as at the same time Berlin Water Control was being created. The well was drilled, and, uh, couldn't find it for a number of years, had our staff go out there and actually cut the shrub so we could find it, this particular well, uh, we don't have, we do not want to give up the permit for it, diversion permit usually takes around two years to go through the E E P. Um, the well does have some water quality problems, it does produce point seven two M G D, you know, it's back at the health department. Um, we normally pump wells five days straight, we pumped this fourteen days straight, and it was at that rate, so it's, it's a very well-produced well, and it looks to me like it's a potential well field in the future too, uh, the way the state health department looks at this is because it's class one property, because a well exists there. That requires, it can't be sold without another utility looking into it or having first option, however, a change in use can be done, and then passive recreation is potential. Uh, you do have to apply, uh, as Jim mentioned, the water control commission last week approved it to go forward, and I believe the conservation commission also approved it. So we're looking for your, of both, for approval as well, um, this is a great piece of parcel of property, I think it's a great opportunity and location. Uh, and as long as we have some controls to keep the well from being contaminated any further, I think the whole park should go along with that.
Yeah, but, okay, so, so that water, though, like someday could be.
I, I would look at this well field, uh, thinking as, I'm thinking ten years now in, in advance, but I need to interconnections with Middletown and Meriden first, and additionally with Cromwell, then I'll start looking at some distribution systems, but I'm looking at the source, the source has a high potential, our existing well fields have one M G D. It's possible that this could be the more, more than one M G D, which means that we would be in a position of selling water to utilities rather than purchasing. So it would make us almost exclusive in terms of that, it does require a different type of treatment, though, it's not gonna be chlorine, and it's not, well, chlorine fluoridation will be, obviously, it may require VOC, S O C removal. Uh, there again, but the one thing that the fourteen day, uh, testing did back in two thousand and four was, it showed that the sanitary landfill that's located over towards the the Britton side off of Demme Road has no bearing on this area at all, so that was a big positive in that respect.
Yeah, wow, well, I think we probably know water will be the goal of the future, perhaps, as we look at some things that are.
Upper position, because we're centrally located, and I think it provides us with a lot of options.
Yeah, that's great.
One thing I do want to mention, I'm gonna blow this picture up, unfortunately, we have a tank there that's empty, where I have a treatment, a, a pumping station with five pumps on there. Uh, three of them are five hundred G P M, two of them are three hundred G P M, and the generator, the diesel fuel tank leaked, we had to, uh, take the diesel fuel tank out several years ago, cost us thirty thousand dollars. This is not usable, this is wasted, uh, basically, we cost us over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have this removed. So it's, it's unfortunate, so if you know anybody that needs a, a well pump, uh, or a generator, or even a tank, uh, that's something we have to get rid of, this is not valuable to us. Uh, Mike and I often laugh, because I can't understand how an engineer would put a tank in, in a valley, rather than up on a hill, but. I've heard that years ago.
That's been at the bottom of his class in engineering. He needs remediation. Well, perhaps, perhaps he wasn't paying attention that day. Yeah, all right, any questions? Makes sense, right?
Yeah, it's a long evening, but you just, uh, can, can, for a few more minutes, last, two, two weeks ago, as you recall, you approved, uh, the well, um, well, I can't get away with it, I was talking about a well pump. The, actually, this was this past week, uh, and, and, uh, they're putting in the well pump on Thursday, so I just wanted to point out, this is the well one B over at the, uh, 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 well field over in Elton Road, you can see the thirty inch diameter, the twenty-four, uh, twenty inch diameter, and the fourteen inch, this is after eight years. Um, and then this one, it's not a very good quality, if you remember, I gave you the, uh, the stainless steel little.
Yeah.
That's what this is, what it looks like after, uh, eight years of, of usage, the, these are gonna be cleaned up, the pipe goes down in the stainless steel portion, it is in the lower section. This is mostly clay, uh, and probably a little bit of iron, but typically, that was. This is mostly clay, uh and probably a little bit of iron, but typically, that was the one good thing that we have is where we have a lot of clay, so it prevents any surface water contamination into the well. So this is one of the positives in this particular well. I just wanted to bring you up to speak from what you has done last.
Always great show and tell with you, Ray.
It's good at the police department, but anyways.
Well, they could have, they could have done some better show and tell than some picture up. Sirens, I don't know, some other stuff, they could have done something.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Ray. So, on this one, so.
We'll authorize the best to submit a change of use application to the Department of Health, open space use in combination. Future water supply use of Berlin and Berlin Water Control District owned sixty six acre parcel at the rear of Woodland Road at ten one lot E three lot sixteen.
Thank you, second. Brendan, uh all of them favor?
Aye.
Both?
Great, thank you, just item number eight, authorization for the town manager to sign a purchase agreement regarding the parcel, Reservoir Road, open space, Jim?
So the council obviously approved the acquisition of the of the parcel to connect Reservoir Road to uh Timberland. And we recruited Carl Lewis from the Conservation Commission to go out there and check out the path because uh there's a topographic change at the at the point where this property enters Timberland. And we determined that it would be beneficial to have an easement along the remainder, uh the two lots that will remain al- along their south boundary. So we could jog the trail to the um to the east before we headed into Timberland and that would give us better topography for the trail. And so we negotiated with the property owner and and they've agreed to do, uh provide us an easement, a ten foot easement along the back property line so that we can shift the trail away from the steepest area for an additional two thousand dollars. So um we had originally authorized the town manager to enter into the contract for forty thousand, so now we're we're bumping that up to forty two thousand with um with the additional easement.
Great, thanks. Um yeah, sorry, too much of this, any questions for Jim?
It's not inclined, it's a decline on that path, right?
Alright, we'll uh go ahead and take a motion.
We have moved software as the town manager to enter into a purchase agreement. Prior states for acquisition of one acre property and a point one acres easement and reservoir road for a price of forty two thousand dollars. Subject to the review of school preparation council, most replaces the forty thousand dollar purchase agreement for the same property previously approved by the town council on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Uh take second on that. Thank you, any other comments or questions for Jim? There are none, all of them favor, aye?
Both?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Tonight, number nine, authorization for the town manager to enter contract amendment for Euroengineering. For additional two thousand twenty two services related to eight eighty nine Farmington Avenue, Brownfield project.
Will it ever end? This project, it's unbelievable. Thank God for grant money.
You wanna say something?
What do you think, Justin?
Um, we're hopeful, the uh, you know, I am the next big step in this project is to do the cap, uh the um the liner on eighty nine Farmington Avenue, which which is now fifty five Steel Boulevard, that's that's how long we've been involved in the project, right? Changed the name of the parcel, uh the address, but at any rate, um yeah, so the um, you know, obviously complicated project, uh Newport is designing the sub certain sub liner improvements, they expect to have the design done in mid uh March, so we're hopefully gonna get get out to bid on this uh that aspect of the project soon. But um, you know, the project is is complicated, the Larra also provides us services related to the environmental land use restrictions on the adjacent properties, including eight seventy three Farmington Avenue. So um as we did la- last year, we asked them for a, you know, a proposal for services anticipated for the year. And um, you know, uh to to get it approved in advance, there are the two main items that we're approving tonight are general, additional general consulting services and an additional round of groundwater testing. The rest of the services that we anticipate in this this calendar year have already been approved, so it's those two things for uh eighty eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, Richard?
We have the bidding process and we have authorized the town manager to enter into a contract amendment for Euroengineering, two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Additional for two thousand twenty two services related to. Cost being charged to the municipal. This is in the best.
Second on that, thank you. Uh any other, any comments or questions? None, all of them favor, aye? Both? Some more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim, thanks. Appointments. Got a couple, I guess, right? But I know open the nominations. Alright, great, thank you, uh any any other nominations for this position? There are no, we're gonna close nominations, all of them favor, aye? Both, alright, welcome, sit down.
So we'll open nominations for water control, but. Position of the water control. The vacancy we know.
Alright, thank you, uh any other nominations? There are none, we'll close nominations, all of them in favor, aye? Okay. On to the town manager's report.
How we doing with time?
Uh, well, you know, nine o'clock, I'll be there a little bit earlier than this, but. We're here, what's the difference now?
I packed a sandwich.
Better order us some pizza, huh? Alright.
So it's just a handful of updates, uh remember the PD work us comp memo?
Yes.
That uh we got it back from legal counsel and uh it was reviewed by the uh the police, you know, in agreement, document assigned, it's done pretty much, it's one of the memorial lines.
While we're talking about that, how we doing with the pension uh discussion?
So uh Kevin and I had a meeting with the actuaries and uh asked them to compute um the, based on the uh certain set of assumptions that that we had talked about at the meeting, what that would look like. And then also um, you know, if you want everybody to buy into the plan based on the years of service, just take the current predicament and run the number based on age. Because the the liability and and what uh the town's liability will change, even if they're the same same uh number of years of service based on gender. Uh when they join uh based on actual table, so it's not hypothetical, it's better to just run the actual numbers to see what it would look like.
Right.
Because they have used the mortality tables, all those things, right?
Right.
So that's Fabia, so once we have it, I don't know whether you wanna have another meeting or bring it here.
Maybe just one more meeting to see what the numbers are, frankly, that would be kind of budget neutral, right, they weren't sure.
Well.
Never we weren't, revenue.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know, right? Because suppositions maybe that we may.
Yeah, because there was, I I believe there was discussion about the coal adjustment.
Yeah.
Pension, so that might change the, you know, I mean.
Right.
If you adding a two percent coal for a pension, that's different from no cost of living adjustment, so.
And then we need to uh, we have to transfer that, we can do that, the four oh one K money.
Yeah.
Had to be transferred out of the town fund, right?
Yes.
To 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 the, back to the officers to buy in, basically, right?
So if you're if you're developing a plan going forward.
Yeah.
The non-issue.
Right.
Right, so it's going back and taking the folks who are currently in the D C plan.
Right.
And um based on what the town has contributed to their plan, what the buyback would be based on years of service, gender, et cetera. So I I think we, you see the number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, alright, so it's coming.
Yeah, it's coming soon.
Thanks.
Yep, that's okay, um just an update, uh he the pass will provide you an update on the golf commission.
Ah, yeah.
Today, he wanted to meet with the commission first to before before coming in front of the council. But I just wanna give you an update on what happened at the March seventeen meeting, uh the purpose of the meeting is for them to um collectively make a recommendation. To me, actually, uh about what to do with uh the outsourcing of the maintenance, of course. But they have, we have selected the right view as the lower bidder, they had a presentation. The numbers, you know, depending on how you look at it, showed about a hundred thousand to maybe a hundred and thirty five ongoing B C savings, just dollar value. But um given the timing of that, uh the golf courses ready to be open very soon. And we still uh would take much time for the council to so discuss it and also for the legal review. And also, don't forget, uh this has to be negotiated with the local union. I had also mentioned to the golf commission that we had uh after the director of golf left, the temporary situation, man, the superintendent was acting as the director. And I didn't wanna be in a situation where you have three contractors who service the pro and then the maintenance without a director. And I already have seventeen people reporting, yeah, I don't want two more contractors and with just a uh disaster. Ready, ready to happen, you know, so uh what I told the commission that I um right now planning to combine the director position with the pros. Uh when we did the reference check with um a couple of the golf courses, that model worked really well. Um and they were comfortable with that, um in the past, they're feeling a job description, and then we'll have one position. If it's seasonal, like they're busy during the summer, but highly unlikely that they're busy right throughout the year, so if you have one position that the director and the pro will be a town employee. That would um actually bring in even um improve the bottom line, so we say. So uh they all agreed to table it for now, the outsourcing.
Oh, they did.
Discussion.
So they're gonna.
And um perhaps bring it up next year.
Yeah.
So they can have time to.
Yeah, like we talked about at the meeting, right?
Yeah.
We can't, we couldn't get it done anyway.
Yeah.
And and it seems to be going, you know, especially with your change, you're proposing, which seems great, and it seems to be going in the right direction revenue wise, I know COVID helped us immensely. But um, you know, I I I would think it'd be smart to wait anyway, another golf year, regular year, hopefully this is. Yeah, let's hope that looks good, but and safe, right, but but they've been in the black, right, the last couple of years.
Because I'll give the director of golf.
Yes, we we want that position, right, but that's.
Yeah, that's right, that's good, and the other one, I just wanna make sure that uh you you will join us for the.
Yes.
I think the most of the meeting.
Yeah.
But um one of the things that the the message from the commission.
Yeah.
That they like the people who work there.
Right, 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 right.
Nothing against them, nothing personal.
Yeah.
But they just want more. Create more margin so that they can invest back in the golf course, and I understand that, you know, that clubhouse and and the grounds and everything needs a little bit more attention.
Right.
So what I'm telling them is if you restructure it, do it well, uh conservatively, you can generate over a hundred thousand dollars each year. And I think the council will be open um to take some of that money and blow it back, it's capital expenditures to the golf course itself, that's all they're looking for.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, well, the reason for the outsourcing is to see if they can save some money.
Right.
So that we can invest it back in the.
Yeah.
Clubhouse and and the golf course itself.
And.
And um if you can find a way to do that without affecting the mill rate.
Right.
And the golf course paying for it, I think it's a ruined situation.
Oh, yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, that's that's great and uh also the um, remember we talked about perhaps maybe changing that ordinance to give them an average of.
Yeah, three year.
Three year rolling average on on their, you know, they're in the black or whatever their funding, whatever their revenue is, right? Would help, would help them, yeah.
I I'm fairly confident with these changes.
It's gonna be alright, yeah, that's why, yeah, I mean, uh the contracting out for me, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't see us being there yet. Right, to to do that, we still got work we can do on a town level and not have to go through the whole union uh negotiation, and I'm not even sure it's gonna save.
Yeah.
That much money and then to me contractors, I always, as I said at the meeting, I'm not always very. Don't favor contracting out some government services, that might be one of them, because it does seem to be in the end that it ends up costing more down the road, may look good now, but down the road, you still, we still end up paying just as much.
Yeah.
By the time, we may, you know, just from what I've seen in government contracts on the federal level, like we spent all this money or contracting and where people say, wow, you hire, you know, town, state, federal employees, they're too expensive, pensions, healthcare, all this stuff. Well, you look at what we're paying out on these contracts, at least the ones I was involved in, and we paid so much more than it would have been if I had a couple of government employees instead of a couple of contractors, you know, and the same more and got less out of them. Than if we were kind of a government employee in my circumstance, but so I'm always very skeptical, but that's good.
And the other one that was, even if you agree on this.
Yeah.
That to their other. And uh we are. Timberland, golf course is in exceptionally good condition, it's not some of the other places where they took over, it's neglected, poor condition and they have to come in really turning around.
Great to hear.
So everyone agrees, even the commission members, you go to Timberland, it's great shape, so people even with, you know, two group caller work with one superintendent. And the seasonal staff, they're doing an exceptionally good job, they wanna make sure that their staff understood that they were doing a great job, they were just trying to get more resources. So I said, let's try this one, and I'm I've spoken a couple of other golf courses and how they manage things, and I think we can turn this around and actually create the hundred easy.
Nice.
Yeah, and put it to the bottom line and see if you can find a way to, for them to use the funds.
You recommended one point two to create a fund, the money that you're saving, create a fund so that you can go ahead and make those changes. It'd be better to do that than just.
Yeah.
Hear what's going, you know.
Like a special revenue fund that you can create. And this is, obviously, the council needs to decide this, but I I think why not, right? It'll give more, an incentive for the commission and also the director and others to be more creative, I think there's a lot more that we can do with, you know, indoor simulators and friendly people for events and try to create more revenues. We, it's been a little bit stagnant there, so.
They didn't do a simulator thing, right?
Yeah.
That seems to be quite a revenue generator, I guess.
And I know there's a really large youth contingency at Timberland, that's very active, the facilities, and so um being a degenerate hopper, I spend quite a bit of time at Timberland. And so um, you know, you get to know the the young families that made it into the facility. And they're they're very passionate about it, they really believe that Timberland should be something that's invested in and um obviously giving them different opportunities to make money throughout the year. It's obviously really tough in Connecticut with, you know, when you're getting snow up until March first, it's um certainly not the uh the best climate for golf, so any opportunity you can get to. You know, make golf accessible for young people and generate some other processes. Getting in more facilities, you know, there are any workers leaving the home as well, and it's an interesting opportunity for it.
Right, right. Um. So, talk about the V and A.
Yes.
So, just yesterday, I heard from, uh, Barbara White, who is the. Director slash Timberland supervisor, that, um, she's leaving us.
Oh.
Uh, no. She's, um, moving to Florida for personal reasons.
Uh, good for her, I guess.
Everybody else, they don't like the call, but other things too, but, so. So, um. It creates a little challenge, because you were just getting.
Right.
Uh, all the bodies in there and symmetry coming in, coming up with the plan, and and Barbara. Did a complete hundred and eighty turnaround of, you know, how she looked at it, being objective. Uh, looking at the type of patients, um, marketing plans, looking at, you know, the reimbursement rate and. How to manage introducing technology, all those things. So, um, just happened yesterday, so I just want you to know, um, so I have, I can't keep it because this is boiling. Uh, things level pass.
We already knew about.
Yes.
The whole town knew already.
Yeah, so, uh. It, she was telling me how she put the house in the market at ten thirty in the night, at ten thirty-five, she got calls.
Oh, no, really?
Yeah.
Oh, my god. Oh, gee. No secrets at all, so if one other person knows, it's not a secret anymore, okay?
So I I just want you to know that, and, uh.
Oh, let's do that.
We'll, uh, think about how we move forward.
Yeah.
We'll do the next bit, so yeah.
Good for her, but too bad for us.
Yes, I know. I'm happy for her, but it's.
Yeah.
Challenge to find, you plan it, it's a tough market, you know, with the businesses and all that. They've had a real couple of years and. Tough to attract and. Give people this environment, yeah, yeah. Um, just update on the library, I thought it's important to talk about this, um, with the mask. Hmm. Situation changing in town, we have also, um. You know, previously we had said you encouraged you to wear a mask because of the children. We just going like what the schools did, it's up to the individuals, follow CDC guidelines. And, um, if people want to wear a mask, they're aware, but you know. It consists of what's going on in the rest of the town. Numbers have come down, well, in the red, not to orange, seem to be going in the right direction. Uh, you know, we started yesterday, but a lot of people are still wearing masks when they're coming.
Yeah.
Especially if they're coming with children, so leave after the individual or the apartment.
Yep, so all town facilities are.
We have, the rest of the town facilities, they've all just said follow CDC guidelines. Now, we just blew out the last one, yeah, so. Everyone else.
We've done it at the museum, we've taken, you want to wear a mask?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, then finally, um, when I talked to you about trying to find something to communicate to the town, uh, electronically via text.
Yeah.
So we looked at, uh, quite a few applications, uh, even before that, I've been looking at things, but I haven't been able to find something. Really good, um, a lot of them had, um, ways that their people could log complaints, but not really get to them, so, um.
They usually find us with the.
Yeah, I said, sorry, get the positive out. They just show up, they have complaints.
Yes.
And all this right to the man.
Yes.
Um. So, um, we have been looking at, I know, Kate and, uh, I'm not sure, I've had. The two of them joined me on this demo, it's called Text My Gov. It it's fairly easy, cool way of going, um, messages, like you don't have to download apps or sign up or do anything, we just text a number. You go in or use a QR code on the website, and you can sign up for what you want to do. So if if people want to sign up for both them commission, uh, news or county.
I'll get it, I'll get it.
They can, and then the second one, what I like in the phase two of that, so I would like to do, um, with all one big package. Is that you can also. There's some smart technology in there. Uh, and I believe like, most of the time, we have human beings answering phones and responding to things that a machine, a computer, technology can do. So, famous questions, when, when is the garbage pickup? Right, it'll look directed to the website and send the schedule to the person. No human being has to be involved in this, right? Things like, what are the town hall hours? And it'll do, get back to people automatically. And then there are ways that somebody wants to report a pothole or something, you can set it up in a way, so it'll triage to a public works and you put the names down there. And there's a word code that's created and you can track things, uh, before, yeah, so when people say I called. There, and you know, sometimes people, they won't call me when I responded from the town.
Right.
So, um. Next week, I believe I have all the department heads sit down the demo, so that I want them to sort of be comfortable. Because once you roll it out, everybody will have sort of a decentralized role in it. The current, uh, ever bridge, I I I think it's a little, um, clunky to use, you know, just. Uh, one person signs up and he has to type in a message and send it to everyone. This is a lot more user friendly and also, um, a lot more capability to have a dialogue with the community.
Hmm.
So step one is, I want to find something that we can get, uh, messages out to the community. Obviously, people have to do a, um, roll on of this.
Right.
You know, get people, and then bullet cities and websites, other posters, that people can, to let them know.
Yes.
Capability there, if you want to find out, if you want to sign up for this, sign up.
Yeah.
And I have signed up, um, a similar product with my own town, which is great, so I just clicked on things like weather update. And board that commission meeting, um, and every time. There's a meeting that is posted, let's say council, and I, you generally will send it to you saying, hey.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
The complaint that I get from people is, I don't have time to go on the website.
Yes, I know.
I don't know, or I I I don't use, I'm not on social media, so don't ask me to go on Facebook.
I don't know, yeah.
So now you sign up, we'll send it to you.
That will make, I'm sure, many people happy.
Right, so and I also can have different groups, like, uh, I can, you can set it up at the library folks and have their own individual.
No.
Libraries, like the senior center, seniors can sign up for that, and then, like, Tina can send it only to the seniors, right? And then if if something's offered, the hours are changed, you can just notify everyone, like. Pretty much ninety-something percent of the people have phones these days, and most of them, the textile included, it's free, right? So, um, try to get it sooner than later, so. That'll, that'll, this, this has been a challenge for me, with patient, with people, you know.
Yeah.
Um, because it's not easy, and and.
It's two thousand twenty-two, I know. You know, certain aspects of our society collapse, but newspaper business is.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We, when I started, you had three reporters sitting on here. Yeah, you know, we're still noticing everything the right way legally, no one comes to the meetings.
Yeah.
Then people hammer you when they write a letter to the paper.
Yeah.
Because we're not knocking on their door, letting them know the meeting, you know, you can't win.
Yeah.
So I, I, whatever you define for words, yeah. Yeah, I just, we just, people, yeah.
You have to buy, you know, letters, you have to buy time, yeah, whatever you want.
Yeah.
You know, it's unfortunate. I I think if you make it easy for people, um, we take for them, they will, it, but it's simple ads, you go into a text, it's a, it's a, it's a zero number. And the text number, it takes you and and it pops immediately and saying, what you want to sign, you sign up, you know.
So it's easy for, for anyone, anyone.
And it's centralized too.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good. I am, just what we were talking about, it's, it's the the number one, I would say, feedback that I got, some. The people that I talk to know, you know, it's just having information on one place, that's, it's, it's, yeah, it seems like you're really great to do.
So more to come on that, that's all I have today, right?
Thank you.
Um, or if you mind, yes, um, I know we talked about some budget forums and budget workshop dates, would you mind just rehashing those really quick?
Yeah, it's also on the website in case, I I missed it, no, no, but I'll tell you, uh, so tomorrow, month second. We have the board of finance meeting, and we present the budget. Right, so the board of, uh, Ed and the board of, and the town budget. So Kevin does a nice job with, so, not just about it, about fight charts and trends and. How the government is funded and what it is, and it's show and talk, like, it it's important for people to understand at a, not not just the board of finance, the public too. At a, you know, big picture level, uh, you know, how much of the budget is going for net service and capital and salary and what have had it, except, all right? Um, so that 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 will happen tomorrow.
People might be asking, what time tomorrow?
Seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock, and if.
Quarter of the.
I'm I'm up in Hartford tomorrow, so will that be?
Yeah, they're all on Zoom.
Or is it so I can access it in case I, in between?
Yeah, all meetings.
The steps there, right?
For the board of. And then, uh, they have workshops scheduled following Wednesday, the ninth, and the one after that, the sixteen. That's been generally the board of finance will. Sit, ask questions and go with the detail and make adjustments and do all those things during those two meetings, and generally. Give me an idea, but I also will have all the department heads, uh, on Zoom, because sometimes you need them to answer certain questions. Uh, for them to get a bit understanding of why certain things, uh, we asked, or why certain things are created about it for many years, like, it's open book and. Everything is out there, probably. And then, um, on the twenty-nine, that's when you have two forums, one in the afternoon, uh, at the senior center. I believe that's at one o'clock, right?
I think you're right, yeah.
Um, and then at seven o'clock at the Berlin High School Auditorium, same day. That's, it technically a meeting of the board of finance and they present the budget, but. Julia will present the board of it in at all, for the general government. Um, what he planned to do is if they're in agreement, um, the same day, if they finalize the budget. To go to a board of finance meeting and recommend the budget to the council on that. To Wednesday itself, yeah. So. Yeah, so when, if that happens. Uh, you will take up the budget, with make a decision within five days.
Yeah.
Line up, line up nicely with your next council meeting, five days later, the following Tuesday.
Yeah.
But you, it's not like you have five days, you have from now, to look at the budget, to have the material, I ask, encourage you to go through it, ask question. Uh, if you can't, cheering or drop by or.
Hmm.
Join my Zoom for the board of finance meeting and the workshops, that'll be helpful, especially if it's the first time around. Um, the more you know, it's better. And then, uh. After the council, uh, decides what they want to do, it'll go back to them for the, uh, if everything goes well. To decide the, on the mill rate, the basis of the mill rate at the end.
And we'll have a referendum again, I believe.
In the April, thank you, yeah.
He has a nice candy dandy creamery binder with a lot.
Was it must be tight, Kevin must be cutting down.
Supplies. That's how we get to that, that's increasing. We cut out the binders and stuff.
We get us in a row?
Yeah.
We're getting paper now.
Yeah.
The old electronic. Well, did that help? Right, um. You also got a, oh. Email from Kevin. Mm-hmm. And there's a link there, that's great, hit that link, it'll give all the dates and how, it'll go and take you into all the. Time managers for the board of Ed, uh, budget detail, there are links on it, everything is linked, so.
Oh, uh-oh.
This is not gonna work.
It's fine, Doc, it's probably.
Bagging my jacket.
I'll get it for the others.
Yeah, but you know what, what you just said, please look at the budget, because. There were council members here over the last few years that just said, wow, this is a board of finance job, we don't need to look at it. We just voted through, and that's not, we are the legislative body of the town, as we all know here, and that's our job as well, that's what people put us here for. Now, so it's important that we know what we're talking about. So, so where we at, it's been, uh, no, no special, other than the, we already talked about the advisory committees, um, council communications. Ladies and gentlemen, what do you have, thanks?
My heart goes out to the people in Europe.
Oh, okay.
Just awful. I pray for them.
Hmm.
I I would say more of a comment, just, um, following up on the board of education meeting from Wednesday, how impressed I was. With the one student presented her capstone project.
Oh, yeah.
In front of a very, very big board of education, uh, meeting, and. Um, I I was so impressed with your presentation and also the focus on capstone projects and practice, practice-based. For in 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 the Brown School system, it was really. Yeah, hey, even even I learned a thing or two, and it was, uh, it was just a wonderful presentation and in a very. Difficult circumstance to do so, so. That was a hats off to her and hats off to the BHS for having such great programs like that.
You invested in the stock market.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a couple of us, uh.
I checked on my name, bird.
It's a couple of us. Mentioned when she did the presentation, we were like, finally, I knew this in high school.
Right.
I wasn't thinking about stock markets in high school, but all the money we probably could have had, that's good for.
Good job.
Yeah, she was great, it was good. You have comments, questions? Good, all right, we're good, so acceptable to minutes? Motion for that? Good thing.
The motions have been meeting with us from, uh. The verity, two thousand twenty-two.
Second on that? Any other comments or questions? I mean, I know all some papers, I'm opposed, so moved. Yeah, uh. Turned it off for any words of wisdom tonight? We haven't, you know, heard from you tonight, so maybe there's something dying to tell us. Oh, I don't know. Yeah, it was like that, too. Speaking of winning lottery number, how about the guy that did use, the guy, some guy very recently, not in Connecticut, won multi-millions. He did use the numbers on the Chinese fortune cookie. Yeah, yeah, he said, what the heck, and then those were the winning numbers, so whatever, there we go, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no question.
Anyway, thank you, John, for being here. Oh, well, I thought, that's what I call it, fortune cookie. Anyway, uh, motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
All right.
All right, all right.
Oh, my.
Thanks, Kate, too, for being here. Do you want to stay longer, let's stay longer. I thought that was like a short agenda, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, this will be a quick evening.
I thought it was.
I saw it, and I was like, this, this could be a lot. I decided to take the, uh, the one up again.
Yeah.
Charlie Brown.